Good evening, welcome to Township of Lacey, meeting March 26, 2015. Addict notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Community Act pursuant to public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Lacey Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of this meeting. We're going to be giving the salute to the flag in a moment's silence.
(Inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Addendum number one, first reading of ordinance 2015-03, authorizing to exceed municipal budget appropriations limits and to establish a cap bank.
Northerly Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA 48-4-45.14. This is a, um, the said budget limit increase shall be to 1.5% unless authorized by ordinance to increase it to 3.5% over the previous year's final appropriations. Um, the amount, this is amounting to $477,417.72. Can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum two, resolution 2015-99, authorizing emergency purchase of the municipal building heating system.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing an emergency purchase of a train 8.5 ton rooftop unit for the municipal building. On March 16th, we had a failure of one of our units on the rooftop building and has created no heat in several offices. Unfortunately, it's beyond repair and we need to replace it and the emergency costs are in the amount of $15,500.
May I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum three, resolution 2015-100, approving township participation in the federal 1033 military surplus program.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, approving the township's participation in the federal 1033, 1033 program and approving the acquisition of surplus military equipment. Um, there is a program that's offered through the New Jersey State Emergency Management Council where as municipalities are able to possibly get, um, equipment, surplus military equipment, the chief has been, um, surveying the, um, equipment and right now we are looking to, um, receive three 10 kilowatt generators which will be installed at the radio tower so that if we ever are faced again with, um, failure of power such as in Hurricane Sandy, at least our radio towers will be up and operating, um, throughout the municipalities that we have communications. And also, we're looking for, uh, high water rescue vehicles and there's two five ton dump trucks right now that are available with extremely low miles on them, um, that we will be taking for high water rescue and to be utilizing during other emergency situations as well. And this is free to the municipality, we just have to obviously put it on our insurance and so forth.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum four, resolution 2015-101, deferring school taxes.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, deferring school taxes in the amount of $900,000.
May I motion?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
I've seen.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum five, resolution 2015-102, authorizing introduction of the 2015 budget.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, introducing the local municipal budget of the Township of Lacey for the fiscal year 2015. This, um, notice will be published in the April 2nd Beacon as required by law. General appropriations for municipal purposes, $28,018,141. Reserve for uncollected taxes, $1,104,000. Total general appropriations, $29,118,145. Less anticipated revenues, $17,501,310. Amount to be raised by taxes for support of the municipal budget, $11,616,835. A hearing on this budget will take place April 23rd at 7:00 PM here in this room, 2015.
May I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum six, resolution 2015-103, authorizing premium payment for tax lien to be turned over to the township.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the premium payment of $100 on tax lien certificate 2010-150 on block 898 lot 10 and $2,000 on tax lien certificate 2010-56 on block 242 lot 12 to be turned over to the township treasurer to become part of the funds of the municipality in accordance with the provisions of NJSA 54:5-33.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum seven, resolution 2015-104, authorizing releases deposit monies.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing a refund and deposit help for the use of municipal facilities.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, addendum eight, resolution 2015-105, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills in the amount of $6,523,509.50.
Can I motion?
Move it. Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes, almost gave it a gavel, Steve.
Yeah, I did, I did, I almost did it.
Addendum number nine, most to approve township meeting minutes of March 12, 2015.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Addendum number 10, most to approve caucus meeting minutes of March 12, 2015.
Move it.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Addendum number, uh, 11, most to approve rapid license applications for the Fork River Tuna Club and the Leash Township High School PTA.
Move it.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Any add-ons?
Yes, I have one add-on tonight, it's resolution 106, it's a resolution Township, Lacey County, Washington State, New Jersey, authorizing the execution of the Emergency Management Agency Assistance Grant Program. We, last year, we received $10,000, uh, actually $5,000, it's a $5,000 matching grant of in-kind services and this, we're hoping to get another $5,000 this year as well.
Can I motion?
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Curatolo?
Yes.
Mr. Dykoff?
Yes.
Mr. Juliano?
Yes.
Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
That's all I have to add on.
Any comments from the committee, Mr. Curatolo?
Yes, Mayor, um, just like to touch on a couple of things if I could, uh, tonight. Yesterday, um, I had the pleasure of being in, um, Manahawken. Governor Christie was down there, uh, and it was on Route 9, there's a new outpatient facility opening. And it wasn't so much the, the opening of the outpatient facility, it was a small venue, uh, I was fortunate enough to, to attend, uh, but it was the clarity that the governor spoke with when he spoke about, um, that this state, and it was in the cover of the Asbury Park Press today, uh, as long as he is governor, there will not be, uh, any type of medical marijuana, recreational marijuana. Um, being immersed in this from day to day with, uh, specific regard to DUI and, uh, with what I do at the County Health Department, uh, I applaud that decision. I do think that, uh, that is a public health and a public safety disaster. I think that some of the states that are engaging in that now, uh, have serious fires regret, uh, and I don't think some of the tax revenues that were promised are panning out. Uh, so I think there's enough hazards on the road, we all have skin in that game, it doesn't look at who the person is or what the socioeconomic background is. The vast majority of our residents, tonight, tomorrow morning, whenever, wherever they work, are going to be on Lacey Road, most likely get on the park and we're all going to drive next to each other. Um, and I, I think that my, my personal feeling with specific regard to legalized marijuana is that it's a disaster. Uh, and this is not a shill or a bark for the governor, but I certainly do support our governor and I support that decision and the clarity with which he made that statement yesterday. Moving on, I would also like to, um, remind people, uh, I am fortunate enough to sit on our Veterans Commission and the Memorial Day Parade will be a little bit early, but it's never too early for vets and, and everybody that enjoys this parade in this town. Um, you know, everyone is invited to participate, it's going to be Monday, May 25th, um, and it's going to start at Lacey United Methodist Church and end right here, um, where we'll do a blessing near the gazebo and, uh, essentially thank our vets for all the good work that they do, uh, because I appreciate it, I know everyone here does. Would also, um, like to, uh, just thank our schools again, uh, the, uh, the men and women that are in our schools, our Saks, our, our school people. Um, fortunate enough, I'm going to be speaking about DUI prevention there this, uh, June 4th to the juniors and seniors, uh, with colleagues from the prosecutor's office. Uh, that doesn't happen, uh, without schools that, um, offer the invite. And Lacey is one of those schools that steps up each year, long before I ever sat up here and I do appreciate that partnership, uh, that we do have. I support that, it's a public safety, a public health and a public prevention effort. Uh, so, again, once again, I'd like to say thank you to, uh, the good people in our school district for allowing me to come out there and do that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to, uh, bring up, first of all, I'm, I'm think we're pretty happy with, uh, Public Works this year that we're done with the snow. Um, I think everybody's happy over there, we had a tough winter, uh, we got through it, uh, Casey did, and, and the Public Works did an excellent job over there for the winter, so we're happy that's all over and behind us. Second of all, I'd like to remind everybody to, tomorrow, the senior luncheon at the community hall, um, it starts at, um, 12 o'clock, uh, tomorrow, uh, so I'd like to see, you know, whoever can attend, it, it's a good function, we all look forward to going. Um, and also, the other night, I was at, um, Municipal Alliance Meeting. Uh, I spoke to a woman, um, Mrs. Moyer, she handles the, uh, Sophia, I don't know if too many people know of it, I just really, I knew about it, but I learned and talked to her a lot the other night. Uh, it's called Supportive Families in Addiction. Uh, we spoke, uh, pretty deeply into a lot of things. She had meetings the first and third Tuesdays of every month, 6:30 to 7:30 at the Lacey United Methodist Church on Lacey Road. Also, if anybody needs to attend or, or anything, we, she also has a therapist there where it's one-on-one. Um, so it's, it's, it's a good thing and I'm supporting a lot of things that she does, we, we're going to be meeting a lot because I, I'm into, you know, finding out more about what she does. Also, Nick's Pajama Party, the Fun Run 5K, I know, everybody knows Nick G., uh, he did a lot of the, uh, Municipal Alliance runs and everything. Pajama Party for him, like I said, the Fun Run, it's April 11th, it's at Gilly Park Pavilion. The note, donations can be all online at www.gofundme.com/nicks pajama pajama fun run. Um, it's going to be good, it's at the park, it's $25 per runner. Registration opens up at Gilly Park Pavilion, 8 o'clock on April 11th. Um, that's about all I got tonight, Mayor.
Thank you.
Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, the last couple of weeks, we've attended a lot of the installation dinners for the emergency personnel around town and I'd really like to extend my thanks for, uh, getting invited to those dinners and also thank the volunteers that put the time and effort into making those organizations, organizations a success. Um, in addition to that, I'd really like, also like to thank their families for allowing those members to volunteer their time to serve the community. Um, I have a lot of, great deal of respect for people that, uh, are willing to do that to help out other people. Uh, finally, uh, I'll be, I'll be running in the, uh, Run for the Heroes this weekend for the Elks Lodge and I have to run it fast because I have a fantasy baseball draft at 11 o'clock.
Priorities.
Mr. Dykoff?
No comments, thank you, Mayor.
Uh, just touching on what Steve said with the, um, EMS and, and fire companies, you know, we have gone to a lot and we just had, uh, no cooperative EMS last weekend along with Fork River Fire Company and, uh, it, it is nice to go out and, and support these groups and see these, these individuals because they do dedicate a tremendous amount of time to the municipality, you know, to the residents of this town, uh, and as well as their families do with, every time a whistle goes off or, uh, the beeper goes off, they, they run wherever they have to go and, and we thank them for all their support, all their hard work that they do throughout the course of the year. Um, and it is nice to get out and spend the night with them, we all had a great time, those of us that were there. Um, what Stephen spoke about with the, um, the run coming up on Saturday, uh, Stephen glad you're doing it because it's supposed to be 35, it's snowing, so it's, you know, it's going to be a nice event. The Elks do a tremendous amount of stuff in this town for us, they always step up whenever there's a need on behalf of the governing body or any, any organization in town, they're always there for. So I, I applaud them and I'm looking forward to, I'm going to be down there for the, um, I guess it's the final ceremony around 11:30, they asked me to come down, so I'll be down there for that. But Steve, I'll make sure of it, so you come across the finish line first, so, you know, we'll cover that, but, uh, we appreciate you representing us down there, certainly. Um, I just want to touch on one more item, um, with regards to some comments that were made at the school board meeting, the last school board meeting that took place here in Lacey Township, um, regarding the, the school board's, um, reduction in their credit rating, which, you know, recently was in the newspaper. Um, and, and really, what, the reason I'm commenting on it is, you know, we, we usually don't get involved in school board issues, but, um, Eric Schubaker wanted to, I guess the board vice president made a comment that night, kind of pointing the finger towards this governing body, but playing a role in that reduction of the credit rating, which I don't necessarily, uh, think that that's the reason that the, uh, credit rating, and I, you know, I think anyone that's read the report conceded a lot of information that was in the report was, was given to the, uh, outfit, the SMP, by management in the school district, so. I just want to read a couple excerpts from the actual report, which I was lucky enough to get my hands on, I guess about a week ago, that I think are very, very important. It says here fiscal 2014, fiscal year 2014 closed with $669,000 drawdown, uh, net of transfers, which was its fourth in the past six fiscal years from 2009 to 2014. And, and the important part of this sentence is, as expenditures outpace revenues. So the schools are certainly spending, you know, above what they, they are bringing in, you know, which is certainly going to have an effect on your, your credit rating. Uh, then it goes on to say in the next page, "Management indicates," you know, that, meaning that management's given them the information, "that even though township payments were delayed in the past, available district cash was sufficient enough to cover expenses and no short-term borrowing was ever required. However, according to management, almost all available district cash outside the general fund has been depleted, primarily due to capital spending." Hence your, your solar panel project, uh, leaving the district's finances in a vulnerable, vulnerable position. When I got this, uh, you know, information, when I, I was, uh, aware of what was said at the school board meeting, I automatically reached out to our CFO, Linda, uh, who's sitting over here on the left, and I said to Linda, "Can, can you go back and look at the payments that we made to the school over the last couple of years and tell me, is there a problem with the payments coming from the township?" And Linda was good enough to put together a list, which, she reached out to Adrian Fanning, who was our prior CFO, uh, up until this year, and Adrian told her exactly where to go because he kept a running total of these things. And at no point was, were the payments made to these schools in a late manner at all. Uh, with the exception, I have to tell you, during the months of July and August. And the reason it was made in July and August, apparently there was a gentleman's agreement between Jim Savage over at the schools and Adrian Fanning over here, that those months the school didn't have as much of a demand for, for cash flow because they were on summer vacation and that they're really not paying out the payroll that they would normally pay out. And in our situation over here, we're in, since Governor Christie made some changes a few years ago, we're in a situation where we don't have the cash flow during those months because unfortunately the governor has pushed the state aid that we received, which is roughly $12 million, till the end of August. So we didn't have that available cash during those, those months, so for two years, those payments were made in two separate payments during those months, uh, as opposed to one single payment, which is the way it's required to be made, uh, when we make the payments after the second meeting of each month. Um, that was done basically because both of the gentlemen, you know, who certainly know their business, agreed that, well, it doesn't make sense for one entity to go out and borrow short-term money and have to pay interest on it because it's ultimately coming out of the taxpayer's pocket. So that worked out very well over the last couple of years, but we have instructed Linda at this point in time, you know, our CFO, that the payments, uh, give, give the schools a list, this is the dates the payments were made and the payments will be made on those days and we'll make sure if we have to cover it in the summer, we'll have to go out and borrow short-term money, if we have to, we will do it. But I don't see any way in the world that that occurrence has affected the rating being downgraded by SMP on the school, you know, itself, there's a lot more factors involved. And I, I, I think what, what's, you know, unfortunately was driving, you know, Mr. Schubaker's comments is, I'm sure a lot of people in town know that, you know, this is an election year and I'm up for reelection this year, uh, Mr. Dykoff's up for reelection this year, um, there's a rift because I, I've made a decision to move on in my campaign with, uh, separating myself from Mark for reasons that a lot of people probably recognize. Uh, and moving into the election, now, Mr. Schubaker from the school board has decided he's going to take a shot at running for the township governing body over here, which I welcome anybody and everybody to take and put their name into the ring and, and do whatever they want to do, but the way to do it is to take and tell people what you're going to do. If you're elected to this governing body or any governing body, uh, you know, in town or any governing body in, anywhere in the country, tell people what you're going to do to make a difference, to make it better for people. That's, that's all I say, don't start pointing fingers over here, uh, and saying, "Well, the governing body's responsible." Undoubtedly, there's a lot of issues that have to be dealt with at the school, at the school level, you know, financially, they're, they're in a difficult position, academically, they're in a very difficult position, is, their ranking has gone from an A down to a D-plus, uh, but I think they're going to turn that corner. We have some new school board members that came on in the last, you know, two or three years that I think are, are going to make a big difference. Um, I think moving forward, it, it's going to be something, they, they've started, you know, the new, new members, I, I was at a function with Mr. Curatolo, I guess, two or three weeks ago, where they're finally starting to look at, learn to long-term planning, there's a lot of good things starting to move forward, but to take and, and point fingers isn't right. Uh, I've seen some of the stuff going on, I, I have to tell you folks, I was on the school board for five years and we have an outstanding group of teaching staff and an outstanding support staff over there. They do a tremendous job, um, you know, during the years that, that the A, the A-plus rating was there, let's face it, most of those teachers and support staff were there because they've been there 15, 20 years or so. Uh, so you can't blame these problems on, on the staff, you got to start it, you know, at the top of administration, you got to start with the superintendent and start recognizing the fact that within the last four or five years, there's been some decisions that were not the best decisions that have taken and turned the wrong corner. But now, I, I truly believe it can change, um, I, I wish the, you know, new board members the best of luck, I see Regina's a new audience here tonight, um, you know, the, the people that are there that have come on board in the last couple of years, truly, I believe, have, have the heart in it. But I just, I wanted to make it very clear tonight that this governing body, you know, was late on the, the payments maybe two, twice in two different summers, uh, but that's it, that's not going to affect your rate. Management is giving information to the SMP which is coming back and unfortunately, the newspapers, when they wrote the article in the Asbury Park Press, called me on a Friday night at 8 o'clock at night when I was away, asking for a comment for the next day's paper, so I didn't have an opportunity to comment. But I recognize that a lot of people see this, um, and a lot of people listen to what we say up here, so. I wanted to put it out there, uh, there's always an underlying reason, I, you know, certainly wish Mr. Schubaker the best of luck, but let's, you know, let's show the facts the way they are. Having said that, I'll open the floor to public comment, Mr. Moss.
Bill Moss, Chris Kane Drive, Fork River Beach. Uh, I'd like to bring attention to the public, the, uh, taxes that are on the, uh, on the township bills tonight for $6,523,509.50. Out of that, $5,825,923 goes to our school system and I believe that's part, also includes that $900,000 also that's in there.
They have a, a debt service payment due, out of this payment, they have that twice a year and this, that's in that payment issue.
And another thing I'd like to bring to the public is, uh, this past month, our, our bill, just for the streetlights in this town, $25,668. Remember, we're paying for a streetlight whether it's lit or out. If it's out, you're still paying for it, you pay one group price usually for the whole system. So if you see a streetlight that's out, call JC P and L and tell them you'd like to get it turned back on.
Actually, you could do it right on their website or you can call into the municipal clerk's office and we have a running list that goes to them on a daily basis.
Okay. Next question I had on, on the bills, we spent money for, uh, Riverstone for Lake Number Two, do you know what that was for? Was that for a loose problem or not? Wasn't that to rip anybody out?
Uh, that was for the piece of property between the bathhouse and the beach, the piece of property we acquired last year.
We traded off.
We traded it off and we stabilized the area.
Okay, and, uh, I got something for the mayor that he forgot. Forgot?
What would be helpful for you that, you, the, the, the leaf collection starts?
Okay.
That is Nikki.
This is really Nikki to drop the ball, but I'll take and cover it for you. Our, our spring leaf pickup, uh, we do two curb side pickups and the leaf collection is spring, being that you're new, you know. The first pickup cycle's going to be, uh, Monday, April 6th, which is coming up, as Mr. Moss said, very quickly, uh, and the second and final cycle will be April 20th. Uh, all leaves must be placed at curb side at the start of each cycle, Monday, April 6th and Monday, April 20th. It's going to take us about two weeks to complete the cycle. Uh, leaves must be placed in trash bags or containers no larger than 32 gallons and not weighing more than 50 pounds. Uh, we're encouraging environmental friendly, biodegradable bags, plastic will be accepted. Uh, there is no limit to the number of bags that can be placed at curb side for pickup. All leaf bags will be collected, don't mix debris in with the leaf bags or containers, leaf bags or containers mixed with debris or garbage will not be taken. And don't lea, uh, rake the leaves out into a pile of curb side because we don't pick them up that way, violation notices get issued. Um, place your leaf bags and containers separate from your garbage as recycling cans so you don't confuse the two. Uh, and this is, it's just a two pickup thing, we don't extend this at all, so make sure you get out there with mixed, with these two dates. Thanks, Mr. Moss.
Mr. Quinn?
Yeah.
I know the floor is still open, but being you took a, a moment to speak, I just wanted to ask you a question because you made a comment there about, and you referenced me and the fact that we're no longer running as a team, but it sounded like you referenced the fact that maybe Mr. Schubaker is attacking you because you chose not to be my running mate, is that what?
No, no, I might, my comment was, Mr. Schubaker is pointing the finger at this board as far as the board having, uh, the majority of the responsibility for their SMP being downgraded.
Now, why did you feel necessary to mention that you're no longer my running mate and, and for obvious reasons? Did you, was that necessary to, to bring that up?
Well, no, I think people around town pretty much accept the fact that, you know, I've made it very clear since the incident with Dave Moss last year that I, I broke myself away from you as a running mate.
You, you really didn't, actually.
If anyone doesn't understand.
But why, why'd you bring me, bring it up? To, if, if everyone's aware of it, why would you bring it up?
Mark, I mean, it's a public comment, I could comment anything.
Well, and I'm asking you why, you can do whatever you want, I'm just wondering why.
That's because I wanted to do it.
Okay, okay.
Problem?
No, I have no problem with it, I'm just trying to get some clarification. I mean, it sounds like, you know, you're blaming Mr. Schubaker for starting to run his campaign. It sure sounds like you're running yours as well.
Well, no, I kinda, I think a lot of people recognize the fact that Mr. Schubaker is connected with yourself, but if you wanna bring in more discussions, I have no problem with that.
Well, you know, I don't think people recognize that at all.
Mr. Schubaker, for those of you who are not aware of the fact, Mr. Schubaker, Tom Crowell sitting in the back and Mr. Dykoff have kinda teamed together.
And that's an accusation, not a fact. You're making, you know, you're making an accusation, unfounded accusation.
Mark, can I finish? Because I kinda tied all things together.
You can.
And for those of you that don't know, I certainly didn't wanna, you know, go into major discussions, but at the last Republican Club meeting two weeks ago, there was a, an attempt to take and oust me from the Republican Club nomination that evening by, you know, individuals that joined the Republican Club within the last forty-five days. I mean, forty-five days, they brought in forty-five, I'm sorry, forty-five new members in sixty days is what they attempted to do, and they did it. But unfortunately, in the attempt that they tried to put together, Mr. Dykoff, Mr. Schubaker, Mr. Crowell, the vote came out where I won the vote. I came out with enough votes because my loyal supporters came out and voted for me that evening. That vote was challenged by the same individuals and unfortunately, it turned into a rather nasty situation. Even though I had my fifty percent of the vote to win it, I was a gentleman and I agreed, okay, fine, we'll go to a primary. The reason for me going to a primary is because I can segregate myself from Mr. Dykoff as a running mate, which I did because I don't believe I can run on the same ticket as somebody that punched another community in the face in public.
But you just, but you just said that you separated yourself from me right after the incident happened, so why did you feel the need to separate yourself from me?
No, I made that very clear after the incident.
Oh, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like, sounds like you don't have really have your facts straight, Mr. Quinn.
So we've gotten to the point now where Mr. Dykoff will run himself, Mr. Crowell, Mr. Schubaker, you know, will run, but I have completely segregated myself. I am not gonna get involved, and Mr. Latelia is running also. I apologize, Mr. Latelia. But the fact of the matter is that the other individuals are being led by, you know, former Mayor Parker, who believes that anything that's gone wrong in this town since 2011 is because of Gary Quinn. And former Lieutenant Scott Torrella over here in the police department, who has a axe to grind with Gary Quinn because he wanted to become a captain when we appointed our chief and I refused, you know, we, the committee made a decision, we'd support the chief's decision to eliminate that position. So that's where we're at. Those are the players, John Parker, Scott Torrella, and we have three candidates.
Well, for making accusations, why don't we talk about you trying to take over the school board and picking up candidates?
One second, Tom.
I mean, you wanna make accusations, you know, you ran your secretary to take over the school board.
No, Michael.
You ran, you know, among O2 candidates and, you know, so basically, if you're gonna make accusations, it can go two ways, Mr. Quinn.
Mark.
So just remember that. It can go two ways.
Any.
All I'm asking is you brought my name up and now you're expounding upon the fact that you brought my name up. I don't know why you brought my name up.
Well, keep telling the public, I mean, I have no problem with that.
You know, and, but you attacked the schools. This is why we're in the shape we're in now. We go back and forth with the schools. You and Mr. Moss ruined the relationship with the schools over the past three, four years. And that's why we're at, and the past two years, you tried to take it over.
Folks, let me just tell you one thing. I've been mayor sitting here for two years. I have not been able to get a meeting with a single school board member for two years. Actually, three years ago, when Dave Moss was the mayor sitting up here, Mr. Schubaker was the president of the school board and Mr. Schubaker's, you know, policy at that point in time was no school board, no committee member could talk to a school board member unless he approved it first. So this is just an ongoing drama that, you know, is gonna come to a completion this year. I thank you for that, Mr. Crowell, I apologize. You can come up and say something if you'd like. Just your name and address, Tom.
Thomas Crowell, Erie Way, Forkett River. I really don't understand that the, these public meetings, that the township committee meeting should be a forum for you to run your campaign, which is essentially what has happened here tonight. And you have the ability to make whatever comments you wanna make from the chair as mayor.
As do you. Whatever you wanna say, feel free.
Well, quite again, I don't know that this is the public forum to have a debate. You know, these people are here for their own particular interest and they're citizens of this township who have particular items that they wanna address. This is not the time or place for a public debate for the candidate seat, for township committee. That's my opinion.
Now, let me tell you my answer.
Now, let me just also finish that you're making assertions as to who's connected to whom. Those complete, those are completely unfounded. You don't know what or any relationship I have with Mark Dykoff. I am going to run with Eric Schubaker, Eric Schubiger. That is who I'm running with. We have an agenda, which, once we file our petition, which will be done shortly, we will be able to address and get our word out to the people of this township. But as of this time, petition has not been filed. It will be filed within the next twenty-four hours. But I can tell you that a campaign will be held and that's where we will air our ideas and our plans for the township. I don't believe that casting aspersions and connecting people who are not in the room to defend themselves is a fair way to go. A lot of comments have been made in the press and have been left unchecked, and I completely disagree with that. Again, there'll be an open forum for candidates to discuss things, but I don't believe that a township committee meeting should be that forum.
Mr. Crowell, if you wanna go home and re-watch the tape, you'll see that my comments dealt with the comment that Mr. Schubaker made as a school board member pointing the finger, let me finish.
Sure.
At this governing body stating that this governing body, you know, really had a main component as why their rating was downgraded. I didn't talk about the campaign, I didn't talk about you, until Mr. Dykoff chose to bring the entire thing into a complete discussion.
Actually, no, you did bring it up.
Here we go again. I mean, I'm not trying to discuss your future.
You made an accusation that Eric Schubiger made the comments because he's running against you in the primary. That's exactly what you said, if you watched the tape.
Mr. Schubaker has not taken and made a single comment about this governing body until the last meeting, right before the entire event started. So I made a comment based on that and Mr. Dykoff chooses for me to elaborate on my comment. I have no choice. I'm being put on the spot.
But you did it before I made the comment, Mr. Quinn. I mean, either you have a short memory or you're just lying. Which one is it? You made the comment that Eric Schubiger made the comments against the township committee because he's running against you in the primary. That's exactly what you said.
He's involved that way.
Before I said anything. And the only reason I said anything is because it appeared to me that you mentioned my name in connection with that and that he's doing it because, you know, you had broken off with me. That's exactly what you said. So rather than advising someone else to watch the tape, why don't you?
Mr. Crowell, I appreciate your kind, I understand where you're coming from. I certainly understand.
I mean, there was no, I understand, and you have every.
But at the same time, I'm not gonna satisfy Mr. Dykoff in any way whatsoever.
You have every right to mention something that was said in the public forum with the school board and refute that, and that's perfectly fine. When you went off and brought up who's connected to whom and what happened in the Republican Club meeting.
That was after.
And all those politics, and all of the politics regarding that, and all of the movement regarding that, I think was completely aligned. I don't believe it had any business being in this meeting. And again, these people are here to discuss other matters, maybe of the budget or other items that they have personally to bring before this board, and I think that's what this forum's about.
Mr. Crowell, that, those comments were, you know, put forth after Mr. Dykoff phrased the issue.
Mayor, take responsibility for your comments for once.
Well, again, you brought me into a conversation that I was not involved in. You brought me into a conversation I was not involved in at all.
It's not gonna resolve.
You brought other people who are not here to defend themselves into the conversation when that was not being, there was no issue with that in any regard. If you wanna have a conversation or go back and forth with Mr. Dykoff, that's your own personal business, but you dragged a number of other people into this conversation with absolutely no founding.
Incorrect. I dragged other people into it based on Mr. Dykoff's raising the issue and the issues you're talking about unfounded were very founded. You were at the Republican Club, you know what occurred, but it's not worth debating it. I mean, it is what it is, it happened, it's beyond us.
I agree. It's, what happened did happen and I was there to witness it all.
Correct. And I came out as winner.
Well, we will, we will agree to disagree on the procedures that took place that night. All right? Not all, not all the facts have come out about that, but we will agree to disagree on exactly what happened that night, what transpired that night. But what we did agree upon was as gentlemen to move forward with an open primary.
Correct.
Of course, we are now having to drag everything else through the mud.
Well, what we did agree on, just so I'm, for clarification, because you just changed, you made the difference tonight, was that we were gonna run five individuals, none together, but now you're saying you're running with Eric Schubaker.
I am running with Eric Schubiger. And apparently you're running with Tim McDonald.
Who was not one of those five that agreed.
I understand.
But that's, I mean, there's nothing that can be said or done about, so I'm fine with that.
It was just gonna be an open primary. It didn't have to be five separate individuals, it was an open primary.
That's not what was agreed that night, but we're gonna disagree.
Again, we'll agree to disagree.
Thanks, Tom. Tony? Name and address, Tom.
Tony Mancher, dugout drive. I tell you, when I ran in 2004, you guys wouldn't let me talk at all. As an independent, it's amazing. First of all, a friend of mine called me and I guess he looked at the media and told me I was really rude to you guys for interrupting, so I apologize for that. All right? Number two, website, still not up?
It'll be up by Monday.
Monday?
Yeah, we have some security issues that we have to get over when we go to the cloud.
I was hoping, I saw it gone.
I know.
Oh, they got it.
I was hoping too, because we can't even access it internally.
Yeah, I'm trying to do research and I can't do the numbers. I'm trying to get some numbers out of it. Couple things. I was doing research and I came across this township for Lacy from Thursday, July 25th. Just a question. I know you guys said you didn't make, create a position of assistant assessor.
Not recently.
You said you didn't make one?
Thursday, July 25th of what year?
Twenty thirteen.
Okay. What are you talking about? We've had an assistant assessor, I've been employed here since 1983 and we've had one since then.
It says here, assistant assessor, seventy-nine point seven-four.
That's the municipal code book, which was created in 1971.
It says, this hereby creating the position of assistant assessor in the office of the Board of Assessors of the Township of Lacy. That's what it says.
Yeah, but that was, but when was that ordinance created?
It says, I put it off at July 25th.
But there was probably sections of it that it was updated, but we didn't create that in July 25th, July of that year.
I'm just asking, because I didn't know if you guys ever.
It was created in 1982.
Okay, I didn't know. I'm just asking.
Right there where it says it was created and adopted, nineteen eighty-two.
There may have been a, most recent amendment.
This right here is when the positions were created.
Okay. So you, every time a position is filled, you guys have to put that in?
Do we have to?
I didn't understand, that's why I'm just asking.
Every time a position is filled, do we what?
You have to put down that there's, you hereby create.
No, no, you create, what happens is, is that you create the positions that you're gonna have in the township, you know, when you decide you're gonna have them. So in 1982, those were, by civil service regulations, we had to create them in our code book, all the positions that we would have in the township.
So what you do is refer to, on July 25th, you just refer to that code?
Yeah.
I don't know, it was just there when it came up.
Yeah, those positions, like I said, I've been here since eighty-three and that those positions have been here.
Just a question, I'm like, I came across that. All right. Budget-wise, I got some numbers from Linda. Thank you, Linda.
Are there specific items on the budget codes? We're gonna have that hearing on April 23rd.
It's just real quick, Gary. The budget for the legal fees, they actually were forty-one thousand.
Oh, what do you?
Legal fees or tax appeals?
It says here, it says the budget, forty-one thousand in legal fees for his tax appeals.
All right, tax appeal, legal fees. There's several legal fees, line items.
Okay, forty-one thousand, he ended up spending forty-seven thousand.
That's correct.
On four hundred and seventy appeals. That's a hundred dollars appeal. We lost every appeal. I'll show you that later. Now, this year we spent three hundred and sixty thousand for reassessment, right? And I would think there'd be less appeals.
As of now, yeah.
He put in the budget, he put in the budget he wanted fifty thousand.
We still have some pending state tax court appeals that we need to address.
Okay.
That have been numerous years.
So the fifty thousand looks good this year? After he spent forty-seven last year, he asked for forty-one, was in the budget, he spent six thousand over. We lost every one of those appeals.
Right now, we have about a hundred and eighty appeals that have come in and seventy-seven of them are really land appeals on toll brothers, so the number has gone down drastically as far as.
Okay, so we don't think fifty thousand, I mean, and now, let me just give you another thing. I came across a book, it's called The Handbook for New Jersey Assessors. Really great book. I'm not finished reading it yet, so I can't give you all the facts, but I'm gonna give you some details tonight that I picked out of it. And it says the reevaluation company must assist in defending their evaluation at the review process. So does that break down our costs even more or no?
No, because you need the attorney representative there. You do need, we do need legal counsel there, yes.
So we don't get a break even though we're gonna have somebody else at the table?
Correct.
No, no, they're just backing up their documentation.
Okay. The handbook that I was telling you. According to the state, they use it. According to the county, they use it. Does this town do anything different than the handbook we use?
No, we have to follow those guidelines because they're all set by the state.
Because nine oh five dash one, dash oh one, it says assessor's role in reevaluation, assessors should be in frequent contact with reevaluation activities throughout the book, blah, 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 it goes on and on. But the part I wanna bring up and I highlight it, I can give you the whole paper if you wanna read it. It says assessors should participate in or review meetings and be present when representing, representation of the appraisal firm meets with individual taxpayers. I just wanna make my point again. He was never there. Okay? We say this guy's doing the job. This is the rule that's according to state and county, but I haven't given it to you. And I'm not through the book yet, it's a long book, and I still have about five or six issues to hit on his other meeting, but I'm just making a point. The assessor should participate in or review when the firm meets with individual taxpayers. I was one of those taxpayers. He was not there. Okay? Making a point. You tell me he's doing a great job, he's doing great interviews. It gets better. It also says, as a writer of the taxpayer, that no less than three attempts must be made to gain entry to inspect each property. No less than three attempts. This is right there.
I did ask for a total revow, Tom, I don't know if that's for reassessment.
It says reevaluation firm must employ, have employee records regarding individual property inspections. This is a property inspection.
But that's on a revow, a complete revow, not a reassessment.
A revow, not reassessment.
Yeah, reassessments differ.
Not, they don't have to make the three attempts.
Okay, but they didn't make any attempts.
I think it's only twenty percent.
You're saying it's a revow, not reassessment.
Yes, it's twenty percent that they have to do on a reassessment, Tom.
I'll look it up, I got the book, so. All right. The firm is gonna try and get that one ready. Okay. I asked for, I emailed for two numbers, two simple numbers. The numbers were the number of memorandum of judgments last year and the number of judgments that were enforced or recorded. Okay? Mark got back to me, sent it to me, it's signed. Now, Veronica got back to me and told me it was four hundred and seventy appeals last year.
Wrong.
So the number of memorandum of judgment last year, Mark sent to me, four hundred and seventy. So I gotta ask you this question. Nobody had a settlement because I think there's two ways. I looked through the book. And it says a hearing is not always necessary if the assessor and the municipal are missing that, missing attorney and the taxpayer to be a settlement. They can allow that to an issue. So you're trying to tell me that we filed four hundred and seventy appeals. So I get the number.
I think those are the ones that went to the county and came out for a hearing. I think there's other ones that he probably has settled over the counter that came here and got judgments. I think when the assessor does an assessor's appeal and he settles it, I'm gonna call it over the counter, you know, but I don't think it's part of the judgment record of when you come here and you go before the tax court board.
Okay, but Veronica, that would make sense. Because when I ask how many appeals, that would be an appeal. Even though it's settled, it's still an appeal. There's still paperwork filed. So if we have four hundred and seventy filed, that means to me, and Mark signed this, that he did not settle any of them. I know that's not true.
There was settlements, Tommy.
I know there were settled because I know the people who settled.
Yeah.
So, okay, so four hundred and seventy, again, Mark, I'm showing you.
I think you have to ask for the documents specifically, the way it may be worded, and again, with the Open Public Records Act and how you have to request documents, you have to be extremely specific. So there may be different wording that needs to be used to get the answer you're looking for, for, and I'm just gonna throw out a hypothetical. Let's say there were six hundred appeals filed. He settled two hundred of them and four hundred were settled at tax court. And that's what, I see that's what you're looking for. That's what, but I don't know what exactly it's specifically we need to call that.
Okay, what I did, Veronica, I took your number, four seventy, okay? Which I think is a great number. You know your numbers, no doubt about that. So you tell me there's four hundred and seventy appeals. Mark tells me the number of memorandum of judgments last year was four seventy. Okay? The number of judgments that were enforced or recorded was four seventy. Impossible. You know why I tell you that, Veronica? Because mine was never recorded. So now we have a guy, now I have it on paper, because I don't wanna say he said, they said, So, now we have a guy, now I have it on paper, because I don't wanna say he said, they said, we said. Now I have it on paper where the guy says four hundred and seventy were judgments were there last year and four hundred and seventy were recorded. That's impossible, Mayor. I know why it wasn't recorded.
I don't, I, I just asked the attorney whether or not, if it's settled over the counter here, if that goes to a, a settlement, you know, the same way? As, as far as being recorded.
And I don't do that. I'm not involved in that process, so I...
I just mean the tax assessor. I'm telling you, I just, I laid out two things that he was supposed to do. I'm laying out another thing. I'm showing you.
But your, your appeal that you got granted by the county tax board would've went on the books as of January first.
Right.
However, as was explained at last meeting, the reassessment overruled that. And unfortunately, yes, that higher number went on the books January first because that prevailed. So, you can't say that your judgment didn't go on the books. It's just that our reassessment prevail, was, was the one that went on the books.
No, no, Veronica, I can say my judgment didn't go on the book because my judgment was six, uh, three twenty-five and the one on the books was three twenty-five, three fifty. So, I can say that. And I, and, and according to the county, I can say that because I talked to them and they told me that. Now, the other thing is if, he says four hundred and seventy, I'm trying to make a point to you guys that this guy is, is...
But why, why don't you do this? Why don't you let us check that number?
Okay.
Because I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what that...
Four seventy, four seventy, four seventy.
Whether that...
You have it.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, I emailed him, tried to be nice, and I don't wanna go through this open. I was told I gotta go through that.
You have to unfortunately go through the Oprah. It's a requirement.
Veronica, it's all under me. I got plenty of time on my hands and, and believe me, Google's a great thing. I'm writing more and more things.
Just gives the opportunity to check that number to see if that's the overall tax.
I'll be here next meeting. I'll remember that book. But I gotta just ask you one question when I close up. I met with you, Gary, and you don't have to answer me. I'm not gonna put you on the spot. I don't want you to answer me. Just for your reference. I met with you on January twentieth. You left me a voicemail down the road. I know you were sick or whatever. Never did you mention anything about, let me get my new words right because I don't wanna... The assessment superseding the taxes. Never mentioned that.
I said, I told that last month.
Well, maybe just finish, Gary.
Sure.
Then I came to the first meeting. Now, you knew that was part of my thing, that he said to me, didn't get around to it. Came to the first meeting, nothing was ever said about that, the reassessment. And not till my second meeting, which was, I'm gonna say two months later, did someone, Mark brought it up and you brought it up, that the reassessment. Me personally, I gotta tell you, that was one of the things that really ticked me off, Gary. And I told you at the meet, at the library.
Library.
I didn't wanna come here. That's why I met with you at the library. I would think that that would be like, before I even said hello, Tony Manager, the reassessment got over, superseded the, uh, that. That would be like the first thing out of my mouth. I mean, that would be the, the flag I'd be flying up the pole. But now, you didn't fly it up the pole on the voicemail. You didn't fly it up on the first meeting. And like I said, I'm not gonna put you on the spot to when Mark told you that, but it just seems to me that that would be like, that'd be the first thing I'd be spitting out of my mouth. Just like I told you that he said he didn't get around to it. But I'm just making some points. I'll be at the next meeting with more points. Once that flag, once that website's up, I'll have a lot of information for you.
Let me up on, on my daytime. Thanks, sir. Mr. Lattaya? Just your name and address.
Jim Lattaya, Lacy Township. Interesting meeting tonight. Just a couple of things I'd like to address. And yes, for the record, I am a candidate for township council, who will be. And I'm not running with anybody, in case you're interested. But the issues here, I just want to address the deferred payments to taxes and the S and P report that I happened to read as well. And one of the things that you did read is that management indicates, meaning the management of the schools, that the township payments were delayed in the past. And available district cash was sufficient enough to cover the expense and no short-term borrowing was required. My question to the school board, I can't get an answer yet. It was a long-term borrow. Eight point two million dollars of surplus money for the solar panel project went to artificially offset the school budget. That's a fact and it's part of the record. The second thing, maybe you can explain, because some of the management of the school district is saying that this is a accounting gimmick. The deferred payments that you passed the resolution on of nine hundred thousand dollars. Is it a gimmick or is it actual cash that's being deferred to the schools to a later date?
It has nothing to do with pay, payment to the school, if that's what you're referring to as far as in that scheme you're moving from.
Resident, I'm trying to get a, a legal termination because, or definition because nobody can tell us. You passed a resolution, you deferred payment. One would logically think, as in the past, that you're holding that money and paying it at a later date. Or is it just an accounting gimmick?
It's a...
Or, they're using the term gimmick, not me.
It's an accounting entry, yes.
Okay, so it's a...
Yeah, we're, we're not holding back any money.
It's a keep, I just want clarification. But at no time is the schools not receiving the money that they're supposed to receive.
Because the S and P also talks about how they had zero surplus and at one point they have had a surplus of four days and they shut down. The one thing that most people don't know, the school system is the only government agency that if they don't have sufficient funds can remain open. Okay? Other government agencies have to stop them and that's the law. I understand it and I couldn't cite it. So, no good S and P for that. Obviously, you're gonna have some budget workshops. Interesting segue for me to be here tonight. I'm not gonna sit here and mention anybody's names, but I'm gonna set the record straight for once and for all. Two thousand and four, when I ran for township council, members on that dais tore me apart, tore my reputation apart. But our personnel matters that violated my rights, violated my family's rights, and it's happening again. So, I prepared a statement I'm putting on the record, and I'm very proud of my background. And I would ask if I say anything wrong, correct me because I'm not a lawyer, but I don't wanna misrepresent anything.
You understand.
But obviously, the good boys have a game. One accusation that I sued the township in worse times. Facts are, as Lacy Township police officer and president of the PBA Local Two Thirty-eight, I stood up to political corruption and those who tried to corrupt the political civil service system. As a result of me doing so, I was the target of multiple political attacks. And also that I included dozens of false charges against me throughout my career. There was attempts to bypass me for promotions and some successfully did. Along with political deals to demote me and other officers who were not in the political favor of the good opioid network. I do not apologize for defending myself or those that I had represented at the time. The record shows that all, and I emphasize, all charges against me were either dismissed and/or I was found innocent of, in the court of law. The last set of charges falsely accused me of threatening a committee member. It never happened. These charges conveniently came at a time that I was in line for promotion to captain and eventually chief of police. Well, they successfully blocked me on that. How'd it work out for yous? The charges were also politically manufactured, which resulted in me filing suit in federal court. The jury heard all the facts, including testimony from the township's own witnesses, that no threats were ever made and that it was all about politics. This was your witnesses that testified to that. The jury unanimously, and I mean unanimously, found the township and former mayor guilty of violating my rights. The jury awarded compensatory damages against the township and former mayor. The jury was in the second phase of deliberation regarding punitive damages. The...
No, no, no.
Okay, I, I don't wanna...
We're good.
They were deliberating on how much to award me in damages against a former mayor personally. Punitive damages do not come from the taxpayers or their insurance. They are paid for by the individual who the jury awards them against. So, why, if the township's only liability was twenty thousand dollars in compensatory damages, did they offer to and settle the case for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Thus avoiding the punitive phase of the trial that would not have cost the taxpayers or their insurance companies a single penny more? I'll leave that up to the public to ask those questions. The next accusation, and I've asked Veronica as the administrator if I say something wrong, but this has to do with. That I had twenty-five workers' comp cases while employed by Lacy Township. The fact, first of all, public officials or anyone else who releases any information on the Workers' Compensation Act violates state and federal law. In fact, I know you're gonna hit your computer, but NJSA thirty-four, colon fifteen, dash one twenty-eight point three. Disclosure of medical information makes an offense to release said information. Any person who violates any provision of section seven or eight of the Amendatory and Supplementary Act shall be subject to fine not less than a hundred dollars and more than a thousand dollars. For not, for imprisonment for not within sixty, sixty days for both. It's a criminal violation of law to release worker comp records. And it's your responsibility to safeguard those records. But I wanna go on to say that a claim is not a lawsuit. It documents the incident. The fact, as I understand the law in New Jersey, you cannot sue your employer for injuries received in normal course of employment. Many claims never rise more than just document the incident. Some require medical treatment and some serious injuries do receive compensation. But those compensations, unlike the lawsuit, are in a guide by workers' comp. It's not a judge, it's not a jury. The legislators have codified that if you lose an arm, you get so much money. You lose a hand, you get so much money. So, it's not a lawsuit. It's a compensation awarded by legislative act. However, over the pa, over the twenty-five and a half years that I served our town as a police officer, I responded to well over twenty thousand calls for service. Check the records, they're there. I was a proactive police officer. I often led the department in arrest and clearance of crimes. I didn't sit behind a desk all day. I got out there and did my job. And yes, I did suffer some minor injuries and some serious wounds, some that almost cost me my life. And I don't apologize for doing my job. Another accusation, and this one is gonna be a very serious matter for this town and those involved. That I was charged with and found guilty of criminal wrongdoing. The action, allegations are false and it is a fourth degree indictable crime to even release them. Keep that. However, the allegations were investigated by the department's internal affairs, the Ocean County prosecutor, and the Superior Court. And I all found I violated no laws or no policies or no rules. These actions, accusations are both slanderous and libelous. And for a public official or anyone else to hide behind blogs and think they're anonymous, think again. You've left a digital trail to follow, including dates, times, IP addresses, and much more. I hope for the sake that those involved are not using government computers, but I know differently. Maybe it's time for an investigation by the New Jersey Attorney General's Office and those agencies. Yes, I'm running. I stood up to political corruption in my whole career and I will continue. I'm not intimidated. Whether I win this election or don't win this election, I will go on with my life. I think the residents and taxpayers of this community deserve better. And I think it's time that people have to understand you, as an official, have an obligation. Regardless, you have to safeguard the people's rights that you employ. You have to safeguard the law. You all swear to uphold it. And I'm not gonna point fingers here at anybody. I'm not gonna get into name calling or accusations. If it continues, I will take the appropriate action, both criminally and civilly. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thanks, Jim. Cap? Cap, just your name and address.
Captain Flynn, Barney, Pines. Budget question. The line item for the employees' medical, is that fully funded? The full amount put in the budget every year when you write up your budget?
Your contribution or the amount we pay to the...
No, no, the amount that the, you are billed.
Yes, it has to be.
Okay, so...
But the contribution, yes, it's, it's minus the contribution. So, you have our contribution as employees.
So, it's already figured into budget what you're gonna get back from your employees?
Yes, yes, yes. There's not an extra amount of money in the health, in the health benefits co, line item because we minus out already the employee contribution.
The com, combination of both make up that number.
Gotcha. Next thing. Uh, last Thursday night, there was a budget meeting here for the emergency services. Why were they not invited?
Not for the emergency services.
For the emergency services. Why were they, why were the chiefs and the, the captains of the respective departments and squads? Why were they not invited to come speak in front of this committee to say what their needs were for the year of twenty fifteen?
We, we know what the needs were. We each got a, a copy of all the requests from each of the departments and we did speak to them individually, you know, outside of the, you know, realm itself. We, we kinda changed the budget process a little bit this year with our new CFO coming on board. We made some changes to it. But there was no real reason unless, you know, there had been objection for somebody to commit, but we seem to be okay.
But see, that's the thing. They need to come in front of all five of you at the same time in talk, not individually. Everybody, like, it's been done that way forever. Come up here, we always used to get a time and that you were supposed to come up here and speak in front of the entire committee. Do you not care about the, the members of the squads that you can't take an hour or two out of a night to have the, the six individuals come up here and speak on behalf of the members of each one of their departments?
I, Kevin, I think you've heard it from pretty much everybody up here that we, we care tremendously about the squads, the members of the squads, their volunteer service and everything that they do. But we, we, you know, in difficult times still, we chose to speak with the individual, you know, the individuals that make those decisions that represent you. I spoke with Ray, uh, I spoke with Ray and the big topic of discussion from your department, of course, was buying another fire truck. Uh, we, we've kinda, you know, made it very clear over the last couple of years, we will buy trucks if we can take and, and get the departments to receive grants, apply and receive grants. We'll come up with the money that we have to do. There's none of that on the, you know, horizon this year. Nobody had done it. Nobody had that forthcoming. So, it wasn't really an issue dealing with the trucks. We can't spend seven, yours was seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We can't lay out seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars in one lump sum as an outlay without alternate, you know, funding coming available. We even went so far as to, to make the suggestion, maybe your department has available cash in your account. And if you wanted to take it, come up with some money, we could work something out and come up with a matching grant some other way and we'll be able to address it. But that was, that's the big issue is the truck. I understand that. Uh, we did approve you for the bottles. We approved you for turnout gear. We knew we were gonna be buying the other stuff.
And we did increase their line item for, um, maintenance of vehicles. And Kevin, the suggestion was made by me to make some changes to the budget for, process and how we've done it and to condense it a little bit. And I left it up to the liaisons to talk to the department heads about their capital. It didn't come from the governing body.
We went, we went another step and we actually have a, a get-together with Ray at your, um, building the weekend, uh, the week of April thirteenth. Mr. Curatella and I are going down there to meet with the chief and the, uh, you know, other officers of the department itself to go over things and really talk more about long-term planning going forward. So, we have that set up and I'm sure I'll see you down there because I know you're involved in that.
Don't argue. You'll see me there.
Yeah.
Now, my question is, who's responsible for fire protection to the township? Who's, 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 who's responsible for providing fire protection?
Well, it's the squad.
Under state statute.
Yeah, I mean, our...
The municipal. So, that means you guys buy the equipment.
Correct.
Our money that we have at the firehouse, we don't come here looking for money to put a roof on our building, to put the handicap bathrooms in there. We don't come here. That money that we have is to maintain our building. We don't come looking for money from you guys. It's under state statute that you are responsible to provide fire protection to the residents. Why don't you have a grant writer to help us out write a grant? Because who's gonna own the truck and ultimately, who's gonna own the truck? The township. So, why aren't you getting a, a grant writer to help us out? Because you're gonna own the truck anyway.
Kevin, you, you actually have a grant writer. You have, Paul Van Dyke is writing.
No, I'm talking about a professional grant writer, someone who does this for a living and knows the ins and outs and all the rest of that.
Paul's been in here a half dozen times this week alone because he's writing a grant for the system that, that you folks wanna have put in place to be able to take and press a button when you're coming up to red lights or the lights.
It's gonna, it's not only good for the fire departments, it's for first aid class and the police.
I can say it was, but I'm just telling you.
It's gonna benefit the whole entire township.
But Paul is writing that grant. Paul's been putting a lot of time into that grant. The other departments, even Bamber Lake, they took and wrote a grant. They got a, a grant for their most recent truck. Lenoka got a grant for their most recent truck. Those gentlemen that wrote those grants are very willing and able to take and work with your department and move forward to writing grants to take and help you out. And, you know, ultimately, I think your department had more success.
You do realize that the grant money is less and less every year, so it gets even harder and harder every year. So, you, it's your responsibility. Stop dumping that off on us to go out there. I mean, you have to provide fire protection or state statute. It's your responsibility. Here we are providing the labor for free. I didn't see anybody up there at two forty last Thursday morning when they had a structure fire and there's thirty-some guys at the firehouse and we pulled every truck out of there. I didn't, I'll call yous all up every time the pager goes off. I have no problem with that. I'll put yous all on speed dial, let you know every time the pager goes off. We're doing the job for free. All the departments and squads ask for is for you, which is your responsibility, to provide the equipment.
Kevin, in, in your department itself, we spent, I believe, a million dollars, what, four years ago?
No, it wasn't a million.
To, to, well, very close to the...
You had eighteen structured fires last year, Gary. That truck's getting used.
I understand, but, but we can't...
It's getting worked and it's saving lives and, and the guys that don't have to go into buildings and fight the fires.
Kevin, we can't...
It's paid for already because you can't put a price tag on someone's life.
No doubt about that.
So, you know what? Seven hundred thousand dollars is chump change to me. Doesn't add, it doesn't even amount a penny.
We, we spent...
Would you wanna be on the end of a hose line on a truck that's forty-seven years old supplying water to that fire and it break down? I don't think so.
I wouldn't have had a ho, hold a hose line, Kevin. So, I mean, we're kind of, it's out of my...
Would you wanna, would you wanna be on that? But forty, I don't see anybody driving any cars forty-seven years old. We're twenty-nine years old. The trucks are old. They need to be replaced. Not only just ours, Lenoka, there's no plan, like you're saying, I'm glad to see you're putting a plan in place because the trucks back at DPW, there's more that need to be replaced. Every twenty years or so, those trucks have been replaced. If, no, hands down, just done because the Salt Ricks havoc on them. It's not just the fire departments. It's back in there.
You're switching over to Public Works now.
But it's about, about a replacement plan like you just said.
No, I understand that, but if you take...
Forty-seven years old, Gary. You wanna be on the end of that hose line?
No, but Kevin, all your trucks aren't forty-seven years old. I know you have one that's forty-seven years old.
And another one that's twenty-nine and he's trying to replace. That, it started five years ago. It's been going on.
Yeah.
Five years because I started it.
We recognize that there's an old truck down there. We're gonna come down because Mr. Curatella really doesn't know the equipment that you have. So, we're gonna come down there. He's gonna get more educated. We're gonna work on the long-term planning. Public Works, we, we bought a lot of stuff or we are intending to buy a lot of stuff in our budget this year because we recognize the fact that we're still dealing with the fallout from Sandy with a lot of the damaged equipment that Casey had back there. So, we're trying to address that. We, like I said to Ray, you're, you're fire chief. We try to address that department more so this year to be able to keep yourself and the other employees back there working with the tools. We recognize we have to keep moving forward with our emergency services. We had two ambulance squads, both looking for ambulances. We had three fire companies. Everyone's looking for a fire truck. But at the same time, we can't take and purchase all these things in a calendar year. We have to be, you know, aware of the fact that the taxpayers are, are footing the bill for this stuff and try and spread it out over time. We will come down there.
This truck's been on the book for five years to be replaced.
We will come down there. We will sit down and look at the stuff and, you know, hopefully in the next year, if you need somebody to help you write grants, we will get you somebody to help you write grants. That's not a problem because we certainly, it benefits us if we can get you a grant. It benefits you if you get the grant. And overall, the best it benefits the taxpayers. So, we're gonna do everything we can.
It almost seems like we're a burden on, on you guys, you know? It's like, we always take the backseat, it seems like.
It's not that way, Kevin.
There, there's other ways of funding the fire departments and squads. You go fire districts. Then we're off, we're out of your pockets. We're not against your cap. Even though the fire trucks don't go against your cap.
Right. I understand. But I, I don't believe that the taxpayers wanna have fire district, Cap.
All right, I think that's pretty much about it on that.
Good to see you. We'll see you in April, week of April fifteenth, Cap.
You've got it. And I'll be on the committee when I recover.
You gotta lower that down there.
Just, okay.
That's good.
Regina descends of Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. While I can't promise the same level of excitement at our meetings as they are here, I would cordially like to invite the public to attend the next Strategic Planning Committee meeting of the Board of Education this coming Tuesday, March thirty-first, in the high school at seven PM. Come be a part of the Lacy School District's future. And, um, there is a special meeting posted now, um, for Monday. And, um, there is a special meeting posted now, um, for Monday, April thirteenth, at six PM, there will be, um, a presentation on the Code of Ethics for school board members, um, this meeting is open to the public, and then the next ordinary business meeting of the school board will be on Monday, April twentieth, at seven thirty PM in the lecture hall, and I believe there will be a presentation of the new twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school budget, thank you.
Thanks, Regina, thank you. Anyone else? Ladies, I know you have something to speak about? Just tilt that up and, uh, just give your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Louise M. O'Brien, I'm not a taxpayer in this town, but I'm representing a group called Change New Jersey Animal Cruelty Law S four, S four nine five, and, um, I believe you all will have given one of these packages?
Yep.
Okay, um, I don't know if you've got a chance to read them over?
We, we actually just got them today, in a box.
Oh, you just got them today?
Yeah, yeah, they're just given out to the minimum-
And I was just wondering if anybody had any questions about-
I think most of us got them as we came in this evening, right before the meeting.
Oh, you did, okay, um, I do think it would be a very smart thing to do, I just wanted to let you all be aware that Atlantic County is sending out letters this week to each town to start an anti-tethering law, I think it's smart, it's going to be, um, you'll be able to enforce an ordinance in each town, it's gonna make it easier on the police, on everybody, and it's not gonna get people upset, a lot of people were very upset this winter when they saw dogs outside, and a lot of dogs died. Now, we have been successful in getting an ordinance in Plainfield, we also got an ordinance in Vouries, and we have four other ordinances, Toms River, Little Lake Harbor, and, um, Berkeley, right now, that are, um, you know, they're looking at it, and they're all very, very interested, um, also, you know, we were talking about fines, the mayor in Little Lake Harbor, where I'm from, he thinks I'm not, the fines that I suggested are not strict enough. Anyway, um, I was going to bring a chain in here tonight to show you guys what some of these chains, um, weigh that are on these dogs, it's very cruel, I don't know if, I'm sure a lot of you are dog and animal lovers, I think nearly everybody is, um, a lot of the voters in New Jersey are animal lovers, so, you know, you gotta please us, um, and I tried, wanted to bring that chain in, but I could not lift it, and that's the honest to ask, true.
Now, you're talking, when you, when you talk about this anti-tethering, and I did, you know, have a chance to look through the booklet, for example, and, and I don't, I don't do this, so, but I put my dog outside in my yard, but, you know, it's, some dogs are, are scape artists.
Right.
You talking about like a normal leash, like a fifteen-foot leash that you would put on the dog, you know, like that canvas leash, are you talking about that type, or are you just talking about when you tethering, like chains?
We're talking about chains, and we're talking about, and tethering, which is fair.
Long-term, so if I just put her out for an hour and she's on her leash, that's okay?
Yes.
And then I bring her back in for the rest of the day?
A lot of people don't do that, they're out there twenty-four seven.
Yeah, no, I understand, yeah, yes.
Isn't that kind of, I think there's something about a day in the life of a backyard dog?
Okay.
And it's, it's like a sad little story, but there are dogs that are outside all day.
Okay, so you're not meeting, like, you, you put your dog out for an hour, and she's on a leash, then you bring her in, okay?
There are dogs that are out there all day, and then there's also something about weather in there, because-
Yes, yes.
-it's dogs and die, and it's here.
Yeah, we've had some extreme conditions this year, you are correct of that.
And I think there's an ordinance, it'll give the police and, um-
Animal control.
-control officer, and he through time when they go out and say something, because right now, what things have happened, um, there really are no laws that really help the police or the animal control officers.
Correct.
So, people could say, I can leave my dog out all the time, because there's nothing to back them up.
Gotcha.
I just wanted to say-
I think the picture on the front says, says it all.
Yeah, yeah, it's heartbreaking.
Yes, and, um, I was at a, today at New Jersey Humane Lobby Day in Trenton, and I did talk with Assemblyman Wolf, and he was very, very, he's very, very interested in this, so I do have his backing, I have backing from the New Jersey SPCA and the ASPCA and Humane Society, they're really, really very interested in getting this done, it'll save a lot of heartache, a lot of nasty phone calls that people shouldn't be getting, because not, not all police can go out there and, you know, save these dogs, they gotta be out there saving somebody's life, but also, I would like to see in this town, if possible, actually in the whole state of New Jersey, if there could be, um, a red alert, like we have a code blue for people, a code red in the summer for dogs to be inside in extreme heat, and in the winter, it's a code gray, which means that it's too cold for a dog to be outside. So that's my story.
Is your contact information in this book?
Um, my contact information, actually, I, I'm waiting on more cards.